I'd like to start this evening's presentation with a roll call. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. Hafford?
Aye.
Ms. Panero? Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman? Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Perlo? Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Caligari?
Aye.
Mr. Fotus? Mr. Ari?
Aye.
And Ms. German?
Aye.
Thank you. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear from DeAndrea Walker, Acting Director of Baltimore County Department of Public Works and Transportation. After the presentation, members of the committee will have an opportunity to ask questions. I want to note that there may be members of the community in attendance of tonight's meeting. This meeting has not been designed to accept comments. The Planning Board held a citizens' input meeting on October 21st, 2021, which was the opportunity for the board to hear from citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement budget. I would now like to invite Ms. Walker to begin her presentation.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for inviting us to present to you this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to share our progress as it relates to the capital budget for FY22 as well as FY23, and also to outline how we are spending funds to maintain and improve our infrastructure. Most of you all know this is my second time before the Planning Board on the Capital Improvement Program. I was here last year, actually, it was January 21st last year, when we were known as Public Works. But today, as you know, we're now Public Works in Transportation. Our role here is growing. Public Works in Transportation is one of the largest departments. We're close to 1,000 employees. Our functions include, but are not limited to, water, sewer, roads, snow removal, bridges, the Metropolitan Water and Sewer Financing Program, traffic signals, signs, common programs, solid waste, as well as recycling. And to that, we're now adding transportation. So most of you all know it's a new effort to connect people and communities and to reduce congestion and to bring equity and access to employment for all. A good example of that is our new direction with the Loop in Towson. You can go to the second slide for me. Since October, the Loop, with its 12 buses and two routes, have carried close to 8,000 residents to schools, to shopping, and to work. In addition, you know, we also have our county ride program that takes people to essential services like medical dialysis appointments, as well as areas close in Dundalk, as well as far as Lansdowne. But there's more to come as it relates to transportation, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. We're exploring new initiatives in transportation such as microtransit and our cross-town routes to serve people and communities. Most recently, most of you all may have heard, we did our Transit Development Plan, which is a five-year plan that tells us how we should be on the lookout for transportation and connectivity around Baltimore County. But not just talking about transportation, it's important to know that we have not lost sight of the fundamentals that are important in public works as well. We have 487 million in capital funds, and that helps us to accomplish our mission, which most of you know is to maintain and repair the system of water, sewer, roads, and to modernize and expand where needed. So I'd like to begin with the basics. We can go to the next slide. We'll talk about water first. Our capital program for water is 211 million, and it covers a range of projects, including reservoirs like here, the Fullerton Reservoir. Fullerton's three reservoirs took three years to build and became operational a year ago. The cost of this project was 73 million. Now online, the reservoirs will provide water storage for the county's east side and an improved fire protection program. For the immediate future, we are working with Baltimore City on the Ashburn Water Reservoirs. You can go to the next slide. This is a photo of when it was under construction in 2021. This joint project specifically with the two reservoirs of 20 million gallons each, which has been under construction again since May 2018. The estimated cost for this project is 69 million, and it will be completed March 2023, and it will help us to meet our environmental mandate to cover our reservoirs. Next slide shows you a picture after a year of work on those reservoirs. Now, as mentioned, we are also responsible for sewers, which is our largest capital requirement, and it's coming in at about 316 million in our capital budget. Along with water, the sewer system represents the majority of the total capital budget for Public Works and Transportation. There are 3,178 miles of sewer line buried under our streets and along our waterways, and we have about 120 pumping stations that feed them. The pipes carry everything to two water waste treatment plants that are run by the city, which are the Back River Sewer Treatment Plant located here in Baltimore County and the Patapsco Treatment Plant. Most of you all know sewers are expensive to maintain, and old sewers like ours tend to be very, very expensive. Our sewers are 50 to 60-plus years old, and on record, we have our sewers dating back to 1916, the oldest one, which is located in Towson specifically. Since 2005, under federal consent decree, Baltimore County has invested more than 1.5 billion in our capital program to ensure that we improve the system and eliminate sewer overflows. And we do that by doing a number of things: building new lines, renovating our pumping stations, relining miles of pipe, which we'll talk about a little bit in some other projects, eliminating relief points, and installing systems to respond immediately to failures that we have. To give you a sense of the scale, we've been designing the Patapsco Forest Main Replacement since 2013. This line will carry 80 million gallons of sewage each day, sewage from southwest Baltimore County along the Howard and Anarona Counties. It's still in design currently. However, when it is completed in 2025, it will run almost two miles, and it's about 60 inches in diameter pipe, and it's going to cost us about 26 million. In addition to that, we're building the Cedar Branch Relief Sewer. You can go to the next slide. This is a picture of the Cedar Branch Relief Sewer. This is a new line that will add capacity to the existing sewers and will reduce the potential for sanitary sewer overflows in the area of Patapsco State Park. It's located northwest within the Patapsco State Park and will cost about 14 million, and is expected to be finished by the fall of this year. You can go to the next slide, which also shows you in the park. We also have the Each Branch Heron Run Relief Sewer Tunnel. This is a sewer interceptor located in the Hillendale area. We're building 11,000 feet of new large diameter interceptor sewer to eliminate two relief points and to add capacity. The interceptor will cost about 20 million, and we expect to have that finished in the fall. You can go to the next picture, which is a tunnel of the East Branch Heron Run. You can see it's pretty big there, and we have our guys inside working on it. We have one more picture, the next picture, that'll show you some more work that they're doing outside the tunnel. So now, we'll move on to maintenance. It's important to note that while we're building, we're also repairing. We're investing 30 million in our capital program in water main replacement and rehabilitation, which will renew and improve a number of community networks in Perry Hall, Lutherville, Rice's Town, and Sioux Creek. In these areas, we need to replace deteriorated water mains. Many of the water lines are over 50 years old. Many have become tuberulated. That is where the sediments and deposits have accumulated over years and have reduced the pipe's capacity. Many of these old pipes are prone to breaking, especially in the cold weather, which can create problems on our county roads. You can go to the next slide. Here is our Golden Ring Road breakback in December of 2020. Baltimore County today maintains 2,700 miles of road, and 8,700 roads are streets where our conditions tend to vary from good to needs attention. You can go to the next slide. This picture is a photo of our new pavement, one of our roads that we most recently paved. It's important to note that we're trying to establish community connectivity, and so when we're trying to do that by doing connectivity with sidewalks and bike lanes and things like that, the need to build new roads isn't as prominent as it once was. But we are repairing and resurfacing those roads. Typically, paving lasts between 15 to 25 years, and the life of the repaving depends on things like the traffic, the weather, and the climate. This year in particular, we're investing 24 million in resurfacing just to keep pace. Last year, we started repaving two miles of Joppa Road, and we'll complete it this year. We also repaved 1.5 miles of Back River Neck Road and three miles of Holly Neck Road on the west side and 12 roads in the Old Pimlico Neighborhood. In addition to resurfacing and building roads, there's also a need to widen some roads and to add curb and gutter or sidewalks to keep up with the increased traffic in some cases. On our current list, we have Roland Road, which is in Phase 1 of the project and has been designed for widening curb and gutter, as well as sidewalk. We also have the Ingleside Avenue Road, which is in design with curb and gutter, as well as sidewalk. Kennelwood Avenue has been on the list, but it is waiting for funding and we have not moved that to design just yet. But the plans are to include curb and gutter sidewalk and widening when we get funding for Kennelwood Avenue. As you all know, the need for curb and gutters also brings us to our storm drain program, the growing need to channel stormwater in order to protect lands and homes from flooding. This is a growing problem in older communities built before an awareness of water runoff issues and regulations. Controlling rainwater is vital, though it usually doesn't merit much attention to our constituents until their own backyard is actually flooded. Bologna Avenue in Lutherville is a case in point. The neighborhood around Bologna Avenue and Division Avenue is an older community with antiquated drainage. That roadway has repeatedly flooded, and after years of heavy rain, a pool often forms in front of the fire station. The drains, when we looked at it, the drains were undersized, and this summer, we replaced the old 12-inch diameter pipes with 30-inch diameter drains. And in our capital program for this in particular, these drain replacements in particular, was 800,000 so that we can replace those drains. This solved a very old problem, but we were happy to be able to take that problem off the table. Next, we'll talk a little bit about our bridges. As you know, the bridges are critical to our transportation network. Our bridges in Baltimore County are inspected every two years under state supervision, and the budget is designed to cover repairs, which are small and large, and new construction of our bridges. Public Works and Transportation is responsible for 685 bridges, including Morris Lane Bridge, which was part of the Campbell Boulevard Project, which is in design and scheduled for construction in 2023. The Joppa Road Bridge was recently reopened. This is a two-lane bridge. It was built in 1920 over Honey Gold Run. However, it was closed for a year because of emergency repairs, and I'm happy to say that we reopened that bridge last month. We could have had it open sooner, but as most of you all know, there's a delay in materials, so it took a little bit longer than we expected for it to take, but we were able to reopen that last month. And the next slide shows a picture of the Joppa Road Bridge. Okay. I also know that there had been some questions about the Dogwood Road Bridge. The next picture is a picture of the Dogwood Road Bridge, if you go to that one. This bridge has been in poor condition for many years, and traffic was restricted to vehicles weighing less than 15 tons. A replacement structure for this bridge was designed in 2006, and money for the construction was put into capital budget. That money has been there for many years, but unfortunately, the project has been delayed by several factors. Environmental issues came up right away and a complicated land swap with the State Department of Natural Resources, as well as a change in the course of the stream, which had occurred since the original design from 2006. However, I am happy to report that our engineers most recently did a field survey. The survey was done October 19th, 2021, and was just completed January 4th of this year, a couple of weeks ago, and it is presently in the evaluation stage. Our engineer structures team is working with the County Stream Restoration Group to see if the original 2006 design can still be used or whether we need to start back at square one. Whatever the outcome, the Dogwood Road Bridge is very much on the radar. All right, so let's talk a little bit about transportation. Maryland is the second in the nation in terms of commuters who travel over 60 miles one way to reach their jobs. Traffic infrastructure for us and traffic control are critical. You can go to the next slide. This, most of you all probably have seen, is a new traffic signal that was installed last fall at the intersection of Washington Avenue and Towson Town Boulevard. This one is among 400 traffic control signals constructed and maintained by Public Works and Transportation. You can go to the next slide. And we also do streetlights. Streetlights and sidewalks, and now improved-designed streetlights with high-efficient LED fixtures like this one in Pikesville. Our streetlight program is responsible for light in public right-of-ways, and it's important to note that we own about 14,900 streetlights. Currently, we're working on the LED conversion initiative, and crews have converted about 300 lights to LED in the past six months. It's a slow process considering we have close to 15,000 lights, but the savings in energy and the time are worth it. Next, we'll talk a little bit about solid waste. Most of you all probably heard the Solid Waste End-to-End Study that started over a year ago has now been completed, and we're examining every facet of solid waste to make needed improvements. As a matter of fact, we have started several of those recommendations from the end-to-end study. I believe there were 19 recommendations, and so far, we've gotten up to seven of those recommendations actually started, and a few of those have also been completed. Some of the needed improvements from the end-to-end study included the private hauler system, looking at that again, and how we actually compensate the haulers, and actually how we put milestones and measurements in place for the haulers, the future of recycling, and of course, the landfill life. You can go to the next picture. This is a picture of our Eastern Sanitary Landfill. This is one picture of it, and then the next picture shows you some ongoing operations at our Eastern landfill operation. That's a nicer picture. And then, let's go to the next one, which shows landfill cell 14, which is currently in design and will cost us about 8 million. At the Eastern Sanitary Landfill, we currently have an emergency project to install leach and cleanouts to alleviate landfill gas. We have a few more pictures in here. Your next picture will show us installing our cleanout pipes. It's important to know that the capital funding for solid waste also includes funding for the Heron Wood landfill water treatment system. Toxic landfill leaching is treated before it is reintroduced into nature. We clean the leaching so that it meets state standards and can be reintroduced into the Patapsco watershed as clean water. So those are a few of the projects that we have gone on in solid ways, where we have capital funding included. But we also want to talk about a new initiative that we also have covered in our budget as well. On a smaller scale, DPWNT is also serving individual residents and households. This month, actually Monday, this past Monday, we launched our Bulk Trash Initiative. We're now providing pickup of bulk trash items across the county several times a year. Some time ago, I would say 30 years ago, the county did provide bulk trash services, but had to cut it back due to a tight financial period. We have reintroduced it, and it's given everyone what they have been asking for, and we believe it will help reduce the public's dumping nuisance. Our program started on Monday. Per day, we hit about 2,000 homes. As you all know, Monday, when we started our program, it was a holiday, but solid waste still moves. We still have to pick up the trash, right? But it was also right off of the snow. We did collect about 10%. We did hit about 10% households where they set out bulk trash. So so far, so good. We think even though it was just introduced on Monday, that it's going to be a very successful program. So in conclusion, our capital budget touches everyone in Baltimore County and affects every part of our lives. It comes down to this: capital investment in construction and maintenance today is essential for tomorrow. With that, we will take any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. At this time, I will open it up to questions from the board.
If I could, Scott?
Sure.
You started off the presentation talking a little bit about walkable communities and the lack of need for new roads. That concerns me. You also mentioned that the average commuter in Baltimore County drives around 60 miles to and from work. So what plans do we have for new roads, new connectors, new major connectors so we're not utilizing the Beltway or 83 beyond capacity?
So I also talked about our Transit Development Plan, and we also have a bike and pedestrian plan that's out there. So we're looking at some roads to widen, but we're not looking at necessarily not in my five-year plan right now, building any new roads. We're trying to be a little bit more innovative in terms of not having as many cars on the road and trying to make connectivity around the Baltimore County area. But where we need to widen roads, we have widened roads when there's no other options available to us. But as you know, widening roads tend to be rather expensive. So we are looking at multiple options, and one is our Transit Development Plan and our bike and pedestrian plan to look at connectivity around the county.
I appreciate the transit plan, but if you're not a point-to-point employee, so a bus is great if you only go to one place and don't leave it. So I don't know how efficient or effective that's going to be for the majority of people working, and we can't put a bus to everywhere. So so I still struggle with the fact that I think that should be looked at. I don't think that that's a good plan. Riding a bike 60 miles every day is so.
I have a question. How are you, but this is Derek Johnson. How are you determining what roads that you're going to widen? Are you looking at some studies? Or because the county is rather large, and just how would you know which roads or what roads are being utilized more? And how it's being impacted throughout this county?
So there's a number of ways that we look at to see if roads should be widened. Are we have our traffic impact studies. As development comes in, we look at the amount of traffic going from point A to point B. So in looking at that, we decide if a road needs to be widened. We also have our basic services map, where we know where we do studies every year to and our basic services map was just introduced to you all earlier today, where we know where we have our felon intersections, where there's too much traffic going through a small pipeline. So we look at things like that as well. We have, in this capital budget, in conversations with the county executive, talked about the connectivity plan as a whole so that we can take a holistic approach at traffic impacts around the county. And we are doing that and standing up a program where we can be equitable in making sure that we have the size of the road that we should have in terms of the traffic or that we have another element such as transit available for people to get from point A to point B without sitting in traffic for 60 minutes to try to get across town.
So does that encompass new housing or new developments that are being built? Does that factor into whether or not the road needs to be widened or if traffic is going to be increased or a new school being built in areas? Do those factor in as well?
Yes, anytime there's a new development that comes through PAI, Public Works and Transportation also gets a chance to review those plans, and we review those plans for impacts to the traffic as part of our regular review to sewer, to water. We review those plans as a whole, and we require that they do traffic impact studies. And based on that, before there's an approval, based on our design manual, we recommend or say that they would need to widen the road or they would need to do some work on the road because it's impacting the traffic. So that happens on a regular when it comes to developments.
Thank you.
I have a question. COVID has changed a lot of people's commuting styles. Are you seeing that reflected in the traffic work that studies you've been doing? And do you anticipate that continuing? I mean, how do we? What do we think is going to happen going forward? Will be fewer people? Will we go back to where we were?
Well, I'm not sure if it's going to be fewer people. I think things are going to go back to the way they were. I think some private entities may, of course, start to do virtual, but I don't think that it would adversely impact the traffic when things open back up completely. I think we're going to be right where we were in 2019 in terms of traffic.
I feel like
I agree. I think over the last, it's very hard to do traffic studies right now when so many people are working virtually. And I don't think it's going to go back exactly the way that it was before. So I applaud you because I know you're handling a very challenging situation.
Thank you. When we look at the traffic impact studies, at one time, when we first got into COVID, we were not looking at the traffic impact studies because we were saying, you know, you can't really measure it because the people we were not looking at the traffic impact studies because we were saying, you know, you can't really measure it because the people are not really out there. But you can't hold up work for two years either. So we've been trying to do some formulas to get as close as possible to what it would look like with the best guess estimate as we can without holding up work along the way.
I have a question. First of all, Ms. Walker, thank you for your presentation. One question I had is, to what extent, and maybe you don't know this yet, does the federal infrastructure bill affect our budget? Or are we accelerating projects or have we, you know, maybe we haven't had time to assess that yet? I was just curious.
We, I would say that, of course, we have the ARPA money. I think Director Blade is on here, so he could probably tell you more how they're incorporating the federal fund into our current budgets, but in terms of transportation funding, I know that we have a meeting with BMC on tomorrow, actually, where we're asking the state to consider some of the federal funds that they're getting to consider giving us more of that. So a lot of that federal fund into my knowledge hasn't come through unless it was ARP money, which is not in my, not in my ball of water, so I can't really talk about that, but I can tell you that we are meeting the county exec and all the county exec executives from across the state are meeting to talk at Baltimore Metropolitan Council, and there's a lot of federal money that's going to be coming through for the Infrastructure Act, and we're asking to get a piece of that, but to my knowledge, none of that has trickled down just yet. I could be wrong because I'm not budget, but to my knowledge, GPWNT not here. I've gotten some ARP funded, but not, not from the federal infrastructure funding just yet.
Right, this is Blade, the Director of Budget and Finance. I can just jump in a little bit. With the ARPA funds, Baltimore County has allocated a hundred and sixty million dollars. That's related to COVID relief and everything that we're doing. It's been split into two years, so it's about eighty million dollars a year, and we have until December of twenty-four to spend it all. And there are very specific restrictions on how it can be used. So we have been looking at DPWT projects for what would fit within that funding source. And but as far as the, the infrastructure bill, that's been tied up with Congress, and we're just anxiously awaiting and trying to identify projects that will be eligible for that funding so we can move quickly and work with our delegation to get money toward, to come to Baltimore County.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, you had said earlier in your presentation about, when you were talking about sewer upgrade and sewer maintenance and so forth, you had mentioned some work at, at, at the Sioux Creek location. Can you, can you elaborate on what that is? Was that sewer improvement, expansion, or what, what was it?
It may be a relining project. At Sioux Creek, I, we have tons of programs, but I don't know the one, but I can email you the exact project that we have in Sioux Creek.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I am curious, the, the Dogwood Road Bridge project that you mentioned, it sounded like it started in two thousand and six. I mean, is that, is that a typical timeframe or is that just an unusually long one? For a bridge?
Bridge projects typically take about ten years. They're not easy projects to, to work on. Bridge projects take very long, and it just depends on if it's CSX, if it's environmental, but bridge projects don't happen very quickly. They normally take multiple years to complete. I have two other projects that are bridge projects that are ten-year-old bridge projects. And it, it has a lot to do with, again, the environment, the federal government standards, weight. Yeah, it's a lot. They, they are, bridge projects are probably the longest. I would say I'm, I have my deputy from engineering and construction, but my opinion is that they take a pretty long time, ten years typically, and that's why most of the funding that we get, the federal funding, they give it to us for about ten years, and then you have to reapply because it's a long drawn-out process.
Right, even, even at a state level, it takes so long to, to really plan and to construct.
Other questions? I was curious, I mean, again, your department handles such a wide range of activities. In terms of the, the landfills, what's our current, you know, but how much longer do we have before the current ones will, will be filled up?
We have about seven years, if I know off the top of my head, about seven years, six, seven years.
That's not a lot of time, I would think.
No, but we, we, we had the end-to-end study. We, we are doing some diversion methods. We are putting some methods in front of the county executive to decide where we go next. But those have not been finalized just yet. But, but we have, we have some options available to us, but they, they haven't been finalized just yet.
Oh, is there additional capacity that you're working on or seven years and we're done with the total landfills that we have? So that new project you were showing on the, is that included in the seven years?
Yes, that, that is the last sale that we have available.
Wow, that's very scary. Okay.
De'Andre, you did a great job tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Nisa. I appreciate it.
Yes, I, I will give one last call if anyone on the board has any additional questions for Ms. Walker. Hearing none. Again, I would also like to thank you for your presentation this evening. The next meeting of the Planning Board's Capital Improvement Budget and Program will be next Thursday, January twenty-seventh at five thirty. Information for that meeting can be found on the Planning Board's webpage. I want to thank everyone for attending tonight, and this meeting is hereby adjourned. See you next Thursday. Thank you very much.
All righty, bye-bye.